I guess this is still good afternoon or?
That's nice, that's nice.
Welcome to the...
Does she know you're here?
Yeah, excuse me.
No, Eric Ross.
Can I get everybody's attention? Excuse me, good evening, welcome to the June 5th, 2013 work session for the Planning Commission in the City of Brookhaven. Let the records show that four members, Commissioner DeHaaner, Hess, Cameron, and Siegel are present for the work session. And three are not here right now, Commissioner Frankford, Schmidt, and Fung. Following the agenda, if anybody's got cell phones going, please silence them or turn them off, thank you, appreciate that. First is, we have an organizational and procedural issue.
I would just like to say that we appreciate the commission's patience as we work through our software issues. So if you get repeated requests from us, or if we're inundating, we take the work, we apologize for that, but we're trying to work on our software bugs. So thank you very much.
Actually, I missed the...
Yeah?
I think you got it right the first time, I was just going to read carefully when I got it from the first senator, and then it was changed from you, I didn't read the third paragraph, so I think it's working correctly, I said the name wrong, so I think you're fine.
Well, thank you, we're working on it. So once we get this up and going, it's going to be a very good tool for us to use, but right now, we're working through all the bugs, so thank you very much.
Good. I guess it's just so everybody knows, this is a work session, so you will not have public comment during the work session. The public hearing will be at 7:00 PM, it'll be out in the main room. So I think we're all set for that. Do we have any unfinished business from the last work session? Which we held in, wherever we were in May? No? Okay, so the business at hand this evening is a discussion of the Brookhaven Peach Tree overlay and the underlying land use, and I guess as applies to the proposed text amendments for ordinance, I guess that's ID 1072-RZ13-02 text amendment. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of the meeting tonight, of the work session, is to kind of give you an overview of the reason we're here, and we'll move into the hearing at 7:00, and we'll actually have the actual public hearing on the text amendment. And first, let me tell you that a text amendment goes through the same procedure that a rezoning does. We are required to post the notice in paper, and it's subject to the same procedures that zoning are subject to. And that is, it goes through the Planning Commission for Recommendation, it is open for a public hearing from the public, and then a recommendation is passed on to the council from the Planning Commission, where the council to then have a public hearing and take final action on the text amendment. Sort of some background, and the reason we're here is that sometime ago, in mid-2000, DeKalb County adopted an overlay zoning in this area. And I brought this map to kind of identify the area for you. The city is about 12 square miles.
Susan, can we move that so that...
A little closer?
Yeah, do you mind?
Sure. I will attempt to do that.
And since this is a work session...
Right, this is a work session. Hopefully it won't fall. Can you see it?
Yes.
Is it better?
If you're blocking the camera, that may not matter.
I'm right in front of the camera.
Let me put it right over here.
Well, it's important for those people to see it. They need to see it.
All right, say where you are.
We've seen it, Susan.
We got it, okay.
We've seen it, right?
Absolutely.
Since it's a work session, put that.
We're okay.
Need some water?
Excuse me. Yes.
It always happens at the worst times.
Just a second, sorry. Maybe we can cut that out of the filming.
We'll edit that.
Hopefully I won't be blocking your view. Maybe I can come around to this other side. How's that? Thank you.
Good.
Okay, I'm going to try. My voice is kind of back. Okay, so the City of Brookhaven is about 12 square miles. The overlay is this area outlined in red and blue, and it's about .75 square miles, and there's close to about 468 acres in the overlay area. The city has about 31 zoning districts, and in the overlay, there are about 17 base zones. So what happened in this area is, over a period of time, the zoning that was put in place was based on the original zoning categories in DeKalb County. So there's a base zoning on all these different parcels, there's about 17 of them. So what happened is, an overlay was put in place called the Brookhaven Peach Tree Overlay. And it kind of centered around a livable centers initiative, which kind of spurred from the Marter Station. When you do a livable centers initiative, you have to tie transportation to ranges. So that was the nexus to generate this creative vision for this area. So it's a set of kind of guiding design principles and zoning regulations that are put in place on top of the base zoning. So it's very layered, because you have the base zoning, then you have conditional zoning, because there could be base zoning that's been affected by a zoning case. So in other words, I'm just using this as an extreme example, let's say you have a C2 zoning, neighborhood commercial zoning. And let's say that the zoning conditions that went into place said, "This zoning is approved, subject to the site plan, but we are not allowing you to have a veterinary clinic." I'm just throwing that out there. That's the condition that would be in place. And then you have an overlay that came on top of that, and the overlay said, you know, "These are the uses that are allowed, these are the setbacks that are allowed, these are the design standards that are allowed." In any event, the whole premise was to take land use and transportation and combine them together for this overlay.
If I went out looking at it, it goes from the Fulton County line, the city line on the left side, right there, and just past Oglethorpe, is that correct?
Oglethorpe would be, I believe, here.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
And goes up to this area.
Right, thank you.
And I'm sorry, the street names are not as clear.
No, that's what I thought.
So we're getting there.
What would be the bottom, more or less just a landmark? Would it might look to be a station?
Probably the Kroger.
Just past the Kroger, Bel Air is right on the edge.
It's the Fulton County line.
It's the Fulton County line, yeah.
And basically, they actually, when the overlay went into place, it first was the focus around Marter Station for kind of more density, and then there was a creation for a Subarea 1 and a Subarea 2. So the most density is along the major arterial, and then it gets less dense as you go outside of that area. So the plan identifies Subarea 1 and Subarea 2, and there's a lot of different design features in the overlay. So along the way, when you have a creative vision, and then you have a text that you try to use to implement it, there are going to kind of be bumps in the road, because it's hard to write a text and an implementation tool that establishes and allows you to implement a vision. So that's kind of where we are, in that when this went into place in the mid-2000s, there were market issues, and now the market's turning around, so now development's beginning to take place, and we're dealing with the implementation aspects of the overlay. There was a recent zoning board of appeals case dealing with a density aspect, of which the staff upheld the DeKalb County's decision, and that case is still underway, which kind of promulgated the council to say, "Well, let's put a moratorium in place in this area to look at whether or not we need to consider changes to the overlay for implementation purposes." So a moratorium was fitted to place in March for 90 days, that 90-day timeframe will end on June 25th. And through the course of that moratorium, the direction to the staff was to meet with stakeholders that were involved in the Brookhaven Peach Tree Overlay process, to meet with former DeKalb County employees that worked on the overlay and implemented the overlay, to place a link on the city's website, to acquire input from the community, to take all of those comments and study those comments, and focus on technical aspects of changes that may or may not need to happen relative to the overlay. So with that, we held a council work session, I presented to the council the collective comments from all of those parties that I described, and the focus and the direction from the council was to focus on parking for restaurants, to focus on defining story in that, in the overlay, there's requirement that you have to be at least two stories. And so it's my understanding, the concern has been that someone not try to build a fake story as the second story, but to actually build a story that's usable, so henceforth the reason for trying to further define what a story is.
Susan, on our side, we would define it as it has to be a usable second story, right? Not just like a big second story with a desk and chair or something like that?
Right, and in the definition and in the text, we did go to that, but then it was kind of, there was a lot of discussion about, what if you have an outdoor area and balcony area, and what if you have an eating area outside, and should the second floor be the same square footage as the first floor? So initially on its face, when you think about it, your mind, or actually my mind actually went to, well, the second floor probably should be 100% of the first floor. But then if you look at how the architecture may affect the build-out of the second floor, when you look at your text, you'll see that's the reason that we put the 75% rule in there. And we did say that if you had an outdoor balcony area, that that area could not be included in that space, so that's the reason for that. So we increased parking requirements for restaurants, and we included, the points that were made was that it appeared as though there were only 10 spaces allowed or required for restaurants. So what we did is increase that requirement for restaurants, and we also included the area that might be included for outdoor dining in the square footage requirement, so that an example would be if you had a 5,000 square foot dining area, that's the indoor and outdoor space. The way the requirement's written now is that you would have 40 spaces for that, rather than what I'm being told was 10. We didn't want to do anything to create a sea of parking, we're still wanting to encourage pedestrian activity, but provide enough parking. So what we've written right now, and that's just an example, if you had 5,000 square feet, it would be 40 spaces. So that's what's in the text amendment right now. So we dealt with parking for restaurants, we dealt with, that was the direction, we dealt with story. The other component was, there was concern over how you measure height at the front facade and the Brookhaven overlay from the sidewalk. So we dealt with that from the finish grade to sidewalk, and that's in the definition, that's in the actual, your package as well. So let me think for a second, we did parking height, story, sidewalk signs, there was a, some concern that sidewalk signs were allowed in the district for tenants, and so we did put provisions in there for easel sandwich signs with different criteria on what they could be constructed of, how large they could be, how tall they could be, where they could be set, that's all in your package. So what did I leave out? And the last thing, of course, is density. And in my mind, the way, I'm sorry.
And density, no, and density, you did not address it.
No, well, actually, I'm going to go to that, but Mr....
Go ahead.
I don't want to, I'm just trying to get an idea of what we're talking about. There's a restaurant on Memorial Drive, 6 feet under, so they have a restaurant on the bottom, and then they have a rooftop dining area with portable heating units installed. So under this, would that be counted because it's heated, and then with those, you know, how would you address something like that? I don't know if a restaurant wanted that sort of, as a rooftop dining area.
If we, the way it's currently written, if that area was rooftop, but it wasn't actually part of the construction of the building, and it was rooftop and it was kind of open air and heated, we would not include that in the second story, the way it's currently written.
So it would have to be covered?
Yes, yes. That's right. Okay. Density, so, and then the last major aspect of the technical change, which was kind of the catalyst to this, was the density question. And when you read through the overlay text, there's language that says, "If there is a conflict, that the underlying zoning controls." And that's clear to me. However, the direction was for me to add additional language to make that further clarification for other readers. That's the purpose of adding the two additional sentences that says that if the overlay provisions and the underlying zoning regulations are competing, that the underlying zoning is what it falls to.
That's the part five that's in this.
That's right.
So can you give us an example, please?
Well, an example would be if there was an apartment complex proposed in the overlay, and they needed to know what their density could be in the overlay, if the overlay is silent to that. However, the zoning district that is beneath that may say 8 per acre, or it may say 30 per acre. Whatever it says is what the controlling density would be. Now, the reason that your language also says just zoning and not zoning district is kind of what I was alluding to earlier when I said there could be a conditional zoning. There could have been a conditional zoning from a previous case that would have said, "This apartment area can only be 6 per acre," or 14 per acre, or whatever. So that's the reason the term zoning is there instead of zoning district.
All right, so the conditional case supersedes...
Right, and you can't usurp conditional zoning without rezoning, so. And then the very last one really is just a typo, and I hate to say it on the record, but the word pubic is in there, so we switched it to public, we thought we'd take that time to funny it up.
We thought that was pretty, no, that correction was...
Very appropriate, so.
I don't think we were, I probably didn't, but I thought it was an interesting...
So my apologies for that. So basically, the purpose of this exercise was not to affect the basic tenants of the overlay, it was to look at some particular implementation points that were brought about and discussed from, you know, vetting, getting input from the public, getting input from those who had been involved in the creation of it, and to just to deal with some basic technical aspects, and that was the exercise. So tonight, when you go into your public hearing, I'll go through the exercise of, you know, how we got here, why we're here, and what we're doing, and you will open up the floor for the public, so that we can hear what the public has to say, so you can make an informed recommendation to the council.
Now, when we go into the public hearing and we make our recommendation, are we making our, I guess, make a recommend, are we voting on each item independently, or is this a single amendment, is this a single text amendment?
This is a single text amendment.
We can, I realize we can make motions to amend.
Right. This is a single text amendment, and you as a body can either make a recommendation to prove it as written, or you may make a recommendation to revise language. In any event, whatever you recommend will move forward to the council for their disposition.
Well, I have some questions, but before I ask mine, Jack, do you have any?
Well, let's go through your questions first. Do you have a question?
No, I always have questions, but I won't...
I suspected you were going to...
No, 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 I know, make it clear, I'm not, so that the items that were addressed in here, they came out of the work session, that was kind of a, it wasn't a list you were given, it was part of the work session.
The list...
I'm trying to understand why there are other items.
Okay. Once I had the meetings with different stakeholders, and we gathered all the community input, we had a link on the website where people were able to send everything in. And once I had meetings with different stakeholders and former DeKalb County personnel, and from the public input, I created a master list that was provided to the council of all of the input that was received. And in that meeting, the direction came from that list to deal with these certain items. So the direction from the council was, yes, move forward with a text amendment on these items.
Okay.
So that's how it came about.
So there might be other items that need to be addressed, but that wasn't the direction you were given from the work session?
Correct.
Or from the council meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And let me just make this comment, there were other items on the list that were, items perhaps that could not be addressed by a text amendment for this. For example, and not to, I'm trying to think of the appropriate way to address this, there were, there were comments that related to the fact that states, for example, someone may have good business and not enough areas to park in, and then there was concern over where they were parking, or things that are kind of outside the scope of the text. So there were some things that we can't address, just because of the nature of the comment, but those were included on the list.
Okay. Keep going, or...
At some point, we are going to, the City of Brookhaven is going to take a more comprehensive
look at the comprehensive land use plan and the overlay itself. One, do we have a time, has the council set a timeframe for that? And will we, or is it appropriate for this commission to hold public hearings to get public input prior to that, to the work beginning?
My, there's two for an answer there. The first is that there are two RFPs that the city plans to issue, Request for Proposals. The first request for proposal is an Economic Development Action Plan relating to Befour Highway. We have not released that yet. The second RFP that we plan to issue is a Request for Proposal for Comprehensive Plan, and that will include land use, transportation, parks and recreation, it will include a short-term work program, a five-year short-term work program. And we hope to issue those RFPs in the next few months. I can't give you an exact date.
No, but in touch.
But we hope, the Economic Development Action Plan most likely will come first, and then we would like to fold that Economic Development Action Plan into the COMP Plan. So that's the plan. So we do hope to issue those RFPs in the next few months. And then, when that gets underway, that will be the time to start getting community input, and we want and encourage community input. We'll look at issues and opportunities and all of the things throughout the city. So that's the appropriate time and method to gather input through that process.
Is that when we may take the overlay and actually extend it all the way to the end of Brookhaven, is that an option during that process? It just seems to make sense, I don't know, I know there's not a whole lot there, but...
The land use plan discussion will drive the policy decision on the entire city and what you should or should not focus on. And then, once the land use plan, comprehensive plan is adopted, then we would then have to go back into our zoning ordinance to create the laws and regulations and tools to implement the policy that will be created. Does that make, does that clear?
Susan, can we just go through the timeframe here? So if in, let's just say, three months, the RFP's put out for the Economic Development Action Plan, how long do you expect that plan, if you get the RFP, you have to make a decision, hire somebody, and then have public meetings and so on? What's the length of that process?
Well, I mean, that's hard to say, and so don't hold me to it, but I would say that, you know, I would certainly think that you would complete that in four to six months. I'm just, you know, it's hard to say.
Sure. And since the COMP Plan would be based on the results of that plan, we could expect the RFP maybe to come out sometime while that plan's in progress, but the COMP Plan work won't really begin until the Economic Action Plan is largely in place?
Well, you know, we want to fold that Economic Development Action Plan into the plan, I think there are probably components of the land use plan, and the transportation plan, and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that could be occurring as that's being worked on. And the Comprehensive Plan will take longer to do than the Economic Development Action Plan.
So realistically, it'll be a year from now before we have a COMP Plan?
Possibly.
Okay.
And that's just conjecture and...
Yeah, 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 no, I understand, it's probably going to be longer just the way things go.
Well, I mean, we actually do have longer to do it based on the law, and it's that, you know, that we're a new city, but we don't want to go that far, we want to finish it before the DCA Department of Community Affairs deadline is. We want, we want to do it sooner than...
What is the deadline?
I knew you would ask that question, and I actually knew that, let's see, it is 2014 October, or 2014, I think. It's either October or December of 2014, I think it's October 2014. So we do want to finish it before they say, because we...
That's two years.
We want to do that sooner than...
All right, so in the, in these amendments, there's some specific things, like the 75% square footage for the second story versus the first, or 125 square feet. How are those developed? Are those developed with just the best knowledge and experience of the planning department? Is that, this is your, the planning department's recommendation from your all's experience?
Well, it's a combination of factors. Well, you know, initially, it is, well, how in the world do you define a second story? How in the world do you keep from having someone use a fake, fake second story? And we actually had some input from DeKalb County, I think their figures were, I think they might have been less than that, I'm thinking. I met with our chief building official, we talked about construction aspects, so we vetted it that way.
Okay.
Through, you know, because really, my first reaction was, what should be 100%? But then, when you start looking at, well, how do you realistically make that happen?
Right, that was my first reaction, and I thought the board had an atrium.
Yeah.
Is that a second story, is, you know, you can't use it, I mean, is that a...
Well, and we did have, we did have those that were concerned about, well, what if someone says that a mezzanine is a second story and it's totally not usable? So we, there were a lot, there was a lot of discussion with, you know, a lot of different people to get us to the point that we're at.
And, I want to talk a little bit about the sign, the sign, because there was nothing was addressed in the original overlay, other than it said whatever was in the applicable zoning or sign ordinance, I think that's correct.
And I don't think we'll find that there.
And, and in here, I mean, we have what is essentially a two, you know, six square foot sign, basically a two-foot wide and three-foot high, which is the atrium signs, which take up a lot of, it'd be two feet to take up, if the sidewalk, typical sidewalks, I think, or is the overlay different?
The overlay requires wider sidewalks.
Because five foot, there's less weight, I mean, I, I mean, the first thing that was in my mind is walking down the street with a stroller, my grandchildren's driveway, and holding a toddler in my, you know, next to it, you can't, and I just see this lineup of signs.
Right.
So here, the city is giving me as a pedestrian, a walkway, a pedestrian walkway with interest, hopefully, and then taking it away by letting the restaurants put in signs. So I was trying to understand, you know, why do we, why would we allow it, and to how much is, the ordinance said, only 36 inches is required.
Well, the 36 inches is the ADA safe passage, so that's the reason that's put in there, so that that's, it's not an obstructed passage.
Right, right.
Right, so that's why that's in there. And basically, I think that the thought process behind it was looking at pedestrian activity that they're wanting to encourage in this area. activity that they're wanting to encourage in this area, and just, and then having a human scale with having the sidewalk signs there. And so, and the request was, you know, to include and incorporate some provisions to allow that in this overlay. So this was an attempt to do that.
But do we know what, how deep the sidewalks are in the overlay?
Well, they're required to be wider. I think I recall reading some things that call for nine foot wide, is what I recall. There may be some that are there that are not that wide, because they're already there, they're pre-existing. So that's the reason for, for keeping the ADA requirement in there.
But if we have, but there are pre-existing sidewalks that are only five foot, that was required to go, and then you put in a sign, and yes, you're down to the three feet, which is pretty narrow. It's pretty narrow. To, and would not encourage. I mean, again, if you saw one sign, you know, even to walk around, you know, a parent with a child in a stroller would walk around it. If you saw a lineup of signs, because you had restaurant after restaurant after restaurant, you'd be leaving in and out. I don't know if anybody else, that was my, I was just wondering where that came from.
That's, that's where it came from.
Okay. Anybody? Okay. You want?
Fortunately, the restaurants and the stores are relatively new, so I think what they're trying to do is moving forward. I mean, the five-foot sidewalks, in fact, when this was strictly residential community, now that we're mixed-use to everything that's built going forward, has to have wider sidewalks and a combination of signs. I think they're finding their standing correctly.
Right.
They're just trying to get a leash on it.
John?
Yeah, I wish I had taken my computer so I had all the information here. But basically, the sidewalk, the overlay sets up sidewalks zone. And in the overlay district along the specified streets like Dresden and Peachtree, where you're going to have the commercial likely, the sidewalk zone is usually about 15 feet. And that consists of a five-foot plant strip along the street, so you're going to have street trees and some street furniture, and then a 10-foot sidewalk. On some streets, it gets, I think, commenced to about 12 feet or something, because I remember there's, some places a sidewalk can go down to about eight feet. So, we are talking about-
Yeah, I remember remaining-
Along Dresden, it's eight feet is the minimum sidewalk width, plus you have a five-foot plant zone, a tree zone. So, there is ample width in the sidewalk. I would say that one of the reasons that sidewalk signs are currently permitted under the overlay is the perception that, you know, we want street-like, a sense of animation. And when you have cafe tables, sidewalks are deep enough, or there's a recess in the buildings so you can put cafe tables out by the sidewalk, and you can have a sandwich board that says, you know, special today, lunch special, XXX. It just creates an animation and a street scene that's fun to be in. The converse is what you said, you start cluttering this with junk, and people, because a sandwich board sign is allowed, everybody wants to have one, so you have, you know, storefronts every 20 feet, and you get, start getting people, they don't have any specials, it's just the laundromat, and they just put laundromat out there.
Kind of the attention-
Just to get your attention. So, so then you start tripping over them and their visual clutter. So it really, I don't know how you regulate that to create the animation and the liveliness you like, but to keep the clutter and the debris aspect of it out? I understand your concerns.
No, no, but I, but I appreciate it, because so there is a counter, I was trying to find a countervailing argument for why we would recommend cluttering the sidewalks. The countervailing argument, as I understand what you're saying, is that it's not clutter always, it's, it creates vibrant sidewalks.
Yes.
I think one of the beautiful things about walking along a district like this is you come back up to a restaurant and they have their menu out there. Now, sometimes they might have it posted on a stand right outside the door, but other times you'll see it on a side, A-frame sign kind of thing.
And I think of, like, Columbus, Asheville, Savannah, Charleston, and you think of the use of sidewalk signs there, and I don't know if you frequent those areas, but they tend to use those in those pedestrian oriented areas.
And, but it is also true, in those cities, particularly the old cities, where the sidewalks are narrow and more broken up because they're brick, it is harder to-
Yes.
-to navigate around them. But I understand the point, and there will be several, there will be some narrow places, it's unlikely you're going to get 10 restaurants in a row, new restaurants, in a place that hasn't had any new development, and any new development would have the new requirements.
And, and we did not write this just for restaurants, because we couldn't do that, so it's actually open to-
That's true.
And I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
It's open to-
That's right. It was just the parking was for the, just the restaurants.
Speaking of the visual clutter, though, can they type balloons on it or have any type of-
No embellishment. So we did put that on here.
Nice. You know, like that.
And no lights.
Right. No neon, string like that ones.
Okay. Well, let's see. So that was, that was, those are my questions. So, John, perhaps?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one question. I mean, most of these are pretty straightforward. I appreciate your, you know, obviously, the typos, and then, you know, the definitions of what conflict means. I understand that, and then doing the part, but then the one that caught my eye was the building heights one, in part one. And I read through it, and what I saw was, I'm getting into details on that, somebody made a point that tried to really, really define that, and I don't want to get into the details of this particular point, or this particular amendment request, but I want to understand that when somebody makes a request like this, where does this come from? Why would, as I, you know, I got this, you know, outlines, and thank you for summarizing. Then I went to the actual document, which is 500 pages. So somebody went through the trouble of going through 500 pages to make this one specific request, and I want to know-
Where did it come from?
Where did it come from? And I'm not picking on this person or this request, but when things like this come up in, in the future, how, how can we?
I can tell you exactly where that came from.
Well, we can both.
No, no, I mean, no, I can, you know-
But just, no, we need to-
And I can tell you exactly where, where that came from, and that is, one of the first things that the council asked for me to do was to meet with former county personnel who were charged with implementing this overlay for the county. And in doing that, when you have the opportunity to meet with people that have tried to implement regulations, they are aware of problems that they have tried to find a way to implement. And this is one of the very, one of the biggest things that the county found to be an issue with, and it's like, how in the world do you measure height with, with the facade treatment along the major road? And so, that was identified as one of the key issues that they were having trouble with, that needed clarification. So that, that's where it came from.
So, I mean, this, you know, this, I can only imagine this would come into effect with a structure of a very steep slope, because they're talking about measuring from top to bottom, and now they're going to use the average.
Oh, no, this, this is actually dealing with, are you actually thinking of this text amendment or one that's coming up in the future? Because this is what, this is actually coming from the average elevation of the finished sidewalk.
Okay.
There is discussion about a future amendment to height that would be citywide, but that's different from this particular case.
Why would somebody bother to mention the average elevation of those two? I mean, Ford just says, it's just a finished sidewalk, and I know that that's actually the, okay, one end to the other. Somebody took the time to make this the average, and it's just, either he's a statistics major or he's got a vested interest.
Yeah, I can't, I can't answer that.
Or lawyer, statistics background.
Yeah. I, I can't, I don't, I don't really know that part of the issue.
And that's, and I don't want to get into the nuts and bolts of this particular one, but I want to know going forward, when I get something like this and I get kind of a head scratcher, it's like, to what degree are we able to ask the question, what is it that precipitated such a specific request for a change?
I think you can ask any question you feel you need to ask to make an informed decision. I mean, that, that's your right as a planning commission member, and I'm giving you, you know, the, the best answer I can give you. You know, and it, sometimes, this is the best answer I can give you.
Okay. And this gets back to your point earlier. Do we vote on all of these amendments?
Wait, don't, I missed a minute.
Do we vote on all of these amendments at the going, or can we pick out one and say, you know, we have some questions about one, and then we can change from with that?
We can offer, anybody can offer a motion to amend this.
This is one amendment.
One amendment.
But, and you can vote to say, I'd like to make a, you know, I'm just going to throw this out there. I'd like to make a motion to approve one, two, seven, and four, or, you know, not number eight, or reword number eight, or what. You have the right as a planning commission member to take this text amendment as it is and recommend approval as it is, or with any changes you propose. It's one case, one text amendment with several components, that you have the authority to recommend otherwise.
So somebody could make a motion to say, we want one parking, in part three, item four, we want part one parking space for, for every 125.2.
Can you?
You know, I mean, I mean, well, I said that because I don't want to, I don't want to presuppose somebody, like, he's interested in more or less, but, you know, I mean, that's sort of, okay.
Well, first, just an English editing question, because I didn't read the sign ordinance before, and now I did hear this brought up, and now I guess I kind of understand it. I have a number six on the sign ordinance. I play the social, which I'm not, and plays beyond the exterior wall facade for ten space. I guess I've just asked, what does that mean to everybody? Is that clear?
I would assume it meant horizontal, you know, I mean, if this is my space, it's my, my, my build, my building, I can't put a sign over here next to a job.
Okay. And that was the intent?
That's it.
At least that's how I read that.
Yeah, I didn't read it that way, but I-
That's how I tried to practice.
All right. So we got three out of four, four upside ready, we were up there, then I think we're in.
Okay.
The other issue I would come back to is density, and Susan's, well, we, Susan and I had discussions about this yesterday. So, the biggest-
Jack, if I could, if I may, one second. Before we get into the question about density, I think I might, can I see if Shannon had a call on some other-
No, I believe I know.
You're okay? Okay. Then I'm sorry. Keep going. Okay. I apologize.
And the question just is, we're just talking residential density, I'll make sure just, I can say, it's residential density, because that's what that question is. How many residential, I mean, this is mixed-use, so you might have some office, you might have some retail, and then you might have a residential component. And the office and retail is quite clear. There is no specified limit on square footage, as long as you meet all the other conditions of the zoning code, in terms of floor area that's allowed, setbacks, screen spaces, sidewalks, and so on. But the residential, at least, it's been common in zoning ordinances to specify a maximum number of units, allowing certain zoning difference for units per acre perhaps. So, the overlay is quiet and does not mention anything, the word density, and does not mention the word residential units per acre maximum, and so on. So I think, and Susan has said that, her interpretation means that then you go to the underlying zoning district and see what that says, which is-
R.A.R.
Whatever it says, yes. So I guess my, my real question is still, how do you see, how do we deal with it when there are either multiple underlying zoning districts on one parcel that's being redeveloped in the overlay? And a good example is the wood properties, apartment complexes going up now. There was single-family R75, there was an R.M. zone perhaps, and there was O.I., I know for sure. So you had at least three separate zoning designations there. So that would be one question. And another instance that will be coming up soon, and might come up in multiple cases, is where the underlying zoning district is C1. And if I'm read it correctly, C1 does not allow residential and therefore has no, does not specify any residential density. So now you have an overlay that, at least, is allegedly silent on density, and now you go to the underlying district, and that's also silent on density. How do you, what judgment, how do you resolve?
So the question's really, how would the, how would the planning staff-
Right.
-draw conclusions on that?
Well, there, well, there's three things-
Without putting anybody on this topic.
Well, three, three points that I want to address, and I think that on the commercial and office comment that you made, I think we get to the same place, but we look at it a little differently. I think, and not to take exception of what you said, I just want to clarify. And that's when you said that there's really no control over, this is not exactly what you said, but there's no control over how you would regulate the office and commercial on square footage.
There's no limit on square footage, yeah.
But I, I disagree with that. But we get to the same place. And, and the reason I disagree with that is that there is a saturation point. There is a saturation point on square footage with office and commercial, because it's based on exactly what you said, the lot coverage, the height, the parking.
Yeah, I think that's what I was saying.
So we agree, so I just, I look at it a little differently in that there is, there is a max, and it's the saturation point.
Right. No, I agree with that.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
I was trying to say that, I think we could say that in different order.
Okay.
So you complement a different place, but that's how you would draw, you would draw a recommendation from that.
Right. So we come, we get to the same place, we just look at how you define it differently. So I just wanted to clarify that. Then your second, I think your second comment was, well, how do you deal with mixed underlying, you know, overlay or the underlying having mixed zoning? There aren't that many that are mixed. So I'm not sure if you're looking at property lines or overall masterpieces. So there aren't that many that are mixed, but if they are mixed, you would look at that portion of the underlying and what it is, and that would be the controlling factor. I think your third comment was, if it's C1, how do you deal with it in that C1 doesn't allow for a single-family or multifamily? However, the overlay says you can have workforce housing, or you can have multifamily. How would you deal with that? I would tell you that if it's not listed in the underlying zoning, then you can't have it, unless you rezonate to a category that would allow it in the underlying zoning.
So again, it's not that you can't have it, it's that your recommendation, if you looked at the underlying zoning, you wouldn't be able to recommend to do one where, because there was no, no precedent in there.
It wouldn't be allowed. So the avenue would be, well, there's more than one avenue. The avenue would be, number one, to seek the rezoning. An avenue would be to revise the overlay. There are other avenues, but the current regulations in effect would not allow it.
Okay. Is that, I mean, what we're hearing is how, I think what we're hearing is how the planning staff would, how the staff would come to the conclusion, not whether we agree or disagree.
Right.
You know, that's why I want to keep, I mean, we're not trying to agree or disagree. We're trying to understand where we, you know.
Yeah. And, you know, the, the overarching issue, I think, is what's legally defensible in court as well.
Correct.
And if you don't have a county attorney or so to opine, it would take some, some study, but, but that's definitely the, I think, overarching question that we all want to-
Well, we do have a city attorney.
Yeah. I mean, he's not here, is what I'm saying.
Well, and I think one of the responsibilities we have is, it's a secondary responsibility, but certainly it's an implied responsibility, is if we leave too much unanswered, the ZBA, it winds up at the Z, more things wind up at the ZBA. So the more that is defined, right? If there's something that isn't defined, then somebody's going to define it as they see it and go to the zoning board of appeals, as opposed to us defining something. So we could, I mean, I assume, oh, yeah, I mean, we could take a look at something and we could make a request if we feel there's something specific, and to, to say, we would like, we would have, you know, we would ask that the planning staff, you know, make a determination on whether this needs more definition or not. I assume we could.
Um.
But there's lots of other councils.
Well, you, you could, you can recommend as a, as a commission, what you feel is appropriate. But what I would tell you is that the text you have in front of you, relative to the density question, is the staff-
No, no, I understand that. I'm talking about in general. No, no, I was, I would, we were past that.
Right. Okay, okay.
I was talking about in general. So if we have something and we, we go through the overlay, and, and one of the members of the commission says, boy, this has never been addressed. We know the density-